Hi, good morning and welcome to the July 10th, 2019 Board of County Commissioners meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. Commissioners, tonight we kick off the Sedgwick County Fair, excuse me, the Sedgwick County Fair with a parade at 6:30 through downtown Cheney. It'll be through down Main Street. That'll begin at 6:30. We'll have a groundbreaking then for a new building at the fairgrounds following the parade. And that building was funded through Sedgwick County. The heat is here to stay sadly, and so we've invited a representative from EMS to come talk about sun safety with us this morning. So Tyler?
Good morning.
Morning Commissioners. Pull this up right quick. Like she said, I'm here to talk about sun safety and sunscreen this morning. I know it's not the most riveting topic for a nine o'clock meeting, but nonetheless, it is still a danger that us as providers encounter with most of our citizens during these summer months. A little bit of background on it, sun puts out its type of radiation called UV radiation. There's two types that we concern ourselves with, UVA and UVB. UVA rays are the aging rays. They're the ones that cause your skin to age a little prematurely, cause wrinkles, age spots, stuff like that, but they don't actually cause the burn. UVB rays are the ones that will actually cause you to have a sunburn. What can we do to prevent this? Obviously, the big one is stay indoors, stay in the shade. Peak UV times are usually 10:00 a.m. to about 4:00 p.m. or so. Times adjust a little bit in the afternoon depending on the season. We can look at the Weather Service and they'll issue out a UV rating for the day, and we can kind of reference that for how bad it's going to be on this particular day. In addition to staying in the shade, we can wear wide-brimmed hats, big straw hats like we'd see out in the farm fields, or even long-sleeved light, loose-fitting clothes as well to help block out some of these UV rays. When we don't have those options, wearing gloves, wearing a face mask or whatnot, we turn to sunscreen. Sunscreen is designed to help block, absorb, or just reflect some of these UV rays coming into us. Depending on which agency you go to, the CDC says a sun protection factor SPF of 15 is adequate. The American Academy of Dermatologists says that the SPF of about 30 is a little more appropriate. I'm going to choose to probably side with the dermatologists on this one and go with SPF 30. But SPF 30 will block about 97% of the UVA and UVB rays coming into your body. This lasts for about two hours or so. After every two hours, we need to go ahead and reapply the sunscreen. That time decreases with any time we're going to be in the water, we're going to be sweating or toweling off, which if we're wearing sunscreen and outside, I'll probably be sweating, so it'll be a little quicker than two hours myself. The thing that we're always concerned about is when people obviously go swimming. A lot of sunscreens had in the past noted that they were water-resistant. The FDA has since changed that, so now they are just water-resistant to a certain level. A highly water-resistant, we can put on every 80 minutes or so. Just a water-resistant every 40, and if it's not water-resistant, account for that coming off as soon as we jump in the pool, or the lake, or wherever we're at. Other things we like to let our citizens know about is putting on sunbalm, or a lip balm, on the lips. Your lips can burn just as easily as the rest of your skin, and it's often left out because sunscreen doesn't taste very good. So we want to make sure that those protected. When us, as providers, come out and see a sunburn, a big thing that we like to always tell them is take off your jewelry, your necklaces, your rings. Sunburns are a burn like anything else, they're just a superficial one. So we want to make sure all the jewelry is off, so it doesn't cause a bigger problem once those affected areas start to swell up some. Last one I have is just about the safety of it. I know there's been a lot of concern in the news about sunscreen being unsafe. It's an over-the-counter substance regulated by the FDA, so a lot of the chemicals in there, or all the chemicals used in there, are generally recognized as safe and effective, so that's not something that we have to worry about, which is something we like to tell our people when they say, "Well, I'm not going to wear sunscreen because it causes cancer." Not right now it doesn't. So it's better to use it now and then do something else down the road. So, thank you.
Very good. Lieutenant, thank you very much for being here today and bringing an important message as we enter into the summer months. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, and a quick rundown of our agenda this morning, Commissioners. We have meeting minutes, two proclamations, several advisory board appointments. We're going to recognize Chief Judge Fleetwood for his service to the community. Commissioners will receive a presentation about the Safe Haven Law. Then you have some more guests in the audience today with us for the refunding request by Opportunity Wichita. Commissioners will consider a resolution establishing township treasurer bond requirements. You'll have a report of the board of bids and contracts, and then there's a brief fire meeting. So Chairman, I will hand the meeting to you.
Well, thank you. And keep the picture on Kate for a moment, if you would, instead of on us. I want to congratulate Kate. Last night, we had an event where Kate was recognized, Sedgwick County Representative of 40 Under 40. And I got to meet her, I had met her mother before, but I got to meet her father also. And she is a great representative for Sedgwick County Under 40 Under 40, and we want to congratulate her. But I also noticed in the audience that Evan Roselle is in the audience, and he was there last night, and he was also recognized, 40 Under 40. I want to congratulate him. I don't see any other people that were awarded that last night in the audience, but it's a great award. One other individual last night was Jordan Walker, who was one of my students when I taught at North High School. So I was very proud to see one of my ex-students was selected. So we had some great representatives last night, and congratulations, Kate.
Thank you.
Very good, and I didn't embarrass you. With that, I'd like to call the meeting to order for Wednesday, July 10th, 2019. Madam Clerk, next item.
invocation, to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, please.
Roll call, Commissioner O'Donnell.
President.
Commissioner Cruz.
President.
Commissioner Howell.
President.
Commissioner Meitzner.
President.
Chairman Dennis.
President. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
I don't have anyone signed up to speak on public agenda. If anyone would like to speak on a general item during public agenda, that would be an opportunity, but as we go through the agenda, I will open it up for public during those items, if you'd like to speak at that time. I see no one that wishes to speak on public agenda this morning. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes, item A, regular meeting minutes of June 12th, 2019.
Commissioners, everyone that's had an opportunity to review the minutes from June 12th, rather, 2019, move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations, item B, proclamation declaring Minority Mental Health Awareness Month.
Thank you. I've asked Commissioner Cruz to read the proclamation this morning.
Whereas many citizens of Sedgwick County deal with the brokenness of mental illness and fail to receive adequate care, so during the month of July, organizations across the nation work to increase awareness of minority mental health resources in communities. And whereas mental illness affects one out of five people, touching every age, race, gender, religion, and income, while often not being acknowledged, and the ongoing stigma and lack of access to healthcare act as barriers for people with mental illness. Minorities are more likely to experience factors that increase the risk for developing mental illness, mental health conditions, such as homelessness, exposure to violence, socioeconomic factors, one in four live in poverty in Kansas, and a lack of knowledge about mental illness due to both cultural barriers and mistrust. And whereas mental illnesses are not the result of personal weakness or lack of character and are treatable, with most people finding relief if treated appropriately. And whereas NAMI Wichita, Wichita State University Psychology Department, and many other organizations in Sedgwick County continue to provide threads of hope. When it comes to mental health, one is always looking for hope. Our hope for this event is that you will find a new hope in the threads of hope we present here, and possibly share those threads of hope with your family and friends. Now, therefore, be it resolved, Chairman David T. Dennis and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim July 2019 as Minority Mental Health Awareness Month. Sedgwick County is dedicated to increasing public awareness of minority mental health in our community, and asks that citizens help reduce the stigma and the ignorance about mental health by talking about mental health to anyone and everyone who will listen, and then be willing to listen to their stories.
Thank you. Would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this proclamation, declaring Minority Mental Health Awareness Month.
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
And I do believe that we have Janice Mills here with NAMI to accept this proclamation.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Thank you Commissioners for this privilege to be before you this morning and accept the proclamation on behalf of NAMI Wichita and the Department of Psychology at Wichita State The two groups are working together to present the Second Annual Minority Mental Health Awareness Celebration that will be held tomorrow evening, July 11th, at WSU, starting at 6:30 p.m. Our goal for the event is to educate minority individuals and the community and people of color and families about mental health conditions, resources available for treatment, and to provide hope for persons living with mental illness. And we're able to provide a resource fair as well, and representatives from mental health providers will be there as well from 8:00 to 9:00 p.m. to give out resources and talk with attendees. The theme for the event, Threads of Hope. Attendees will receive a friendship bracelet made with colorful threads and a tag which includes nami.org as a resource. The theme will establish the framework for the panel of mental health providers to share with their individual what their roles are in services which assist persons living with mental illness. And they also will give their version of their feelings about what is a thread of hope in their services to the community. We want people to know that you can live in recovery very successfully with a mental health diagnosis. Every day, people walking amongst us are very, very successful because they've had treatment, they've had the resources to reach out and find recovery in our community. And it's with that support that we appreciate the proclamation and the recognition of NAMI and the work that they are doing. It is our belief that we know in NAMI that treatment works, that people can become educated and access services. Knowledge and understanding can eliminate the stigma that keeps too many from accessing services. And you're helping us today with this proclamation being made public to the commission and to the members and the visitors that are here through your staff. And we appreciate that, and we invite you to attend the event tomorrow to help celebrate and educate our community and welcome people who need the services. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for being here this morning. It is absolutely a part of our mission in Sedgwick County to work behavioral health issues, which mental health is one of those behavioral health issues that we work. It's at the top of our legislative agenda. It's at the top of our thinking every single day. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you so much, and special thank you to Ms. Cruz for getting our invitations to the right people, and Van Williams as well helped me find the right persons. I would like to also acknowledge the NAMI members that are here. If you will stand, we have our president, our current president, our past president. We have members of your advisory board also here from NAMI, so would you please stand? Thank you.
Very good. Thank you all for being here this morning. We appreciate it, and we appreciate what you do for our community. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item C, proclamation declaring Sedgwick County Law Camp Days.
Thank you. Commissioners, I have a proclamation that I'd like to read. Whereas approximately 60 youth between the ages of 10 and 13 will attend the 23rd Annual Sedgwick County Law Camp on July 8th to 12th, 2019, at Lake Afton Park. And whereas the mission of Law Camp is to create a partnership between law enforcement and youth by providing positive experiences using law enforcement and National Guard personnel as role models to build self-esteem, confidence, and trust. And whereas the youth will be assigned to mentors who will keep track of the activity schedule, the mentors will operate in teams of two, consisting of one deputy and one soldier from the Kansas Army National Guard. And whereas Law Camp is a partnership involving more than 32 public and private organizations, now therefore be it resolved that I, Chairman David T. Dennis, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim July 8th to 12th, 2019, as Sedgwick County Law Camp Days in recognition of this effort to involve our youth in alternatives to crime and violence. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation, move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. This is being accepted by Lieutenant Tim Myers from Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office. Welcome, Tim.
Thank you, Chairman. I would like to thank you for the recognition and the proclamation. I would also like to invite members of the county commission and members of the staff out to our barbecue that we'll be hosting tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock at Lake Afton. We do this every year for members of the public and for the kids out there, so you're all welcome to attend. Thank you very much.
Are you going to have ribs at this barbecue?
They didn't tell me whether they have ribs or not, but I'm hoping so.
Oh, I don't know, that might be a deal breaker.
Thank you.
Lieutenant, thank you very much, and thank you for what you do for our youth.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Appointments, item D, resolution appointing Reverend Roosevelt De Shazer to the Sheriff's Civil Service Board.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Commissioners, Mike Papun.
I'm sorry.
Interim County Counselor.
I keep forgetting you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We can take appointments D and E together if it's the will of the commission. These are two appointments to the Sheriff's Civil Service Board. This is a board consisting of five members. The interesting facet about this board is no more than three members can be of any one political party, so we have to keep that balanced, and these two particular appointments are both Democrats. The first appointment is on the recommendation of Commissioner Meitzner, and that is Reverend Roosevelt De Shazer. And item E is the reapointment, and that was a reapointment, by the way, reapointment of Julia Kraft by Commissioner Howell, and a recommendation of Commissioner Howell. And these are in proper form, and ask you to adopt the resolution.
Very good. I'll vote Commissioner Meitzner to start, and Commissioner Howell following that.
Well, thank you for the service that they do. I know this is an important board. The Civil Service Board is very important to our community, so I'll make a motion to approve Roosevelt, Reverend Roosevelt De Shazer, along with Julie Kraft.
And I would second that motion, and they do a great job, appreciate their service to the county.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Second.
Er, aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item F, resolution reappointing Tanya Ruttenbeck to the Sedgwick County Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board in an at-large position.
Mr. Papun, I didn't forget you.
Again, Commissioners, Mike Papun, interim county counselor. Items F, G, and H can be taken all as one item and approved. These are reappointments to the Sedgwick County Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board, a 17-member board that has a number of representatives from law enforcement and our judiciary to work on issues involving juvenile corrections, formulating a comprehensive plan, and annually reporting on that plan. Six members of this board are at-large positions by the Board of County Commissioners, and you have before you three of those at-large positions. We're asking in item F that you reappoint Tanya Ruttenbeck to the board. Item G, Kristen Peterman. And item H, Terry Moses. This is a board that also has some restrictions regarding gender and ethnicity and race, and we have met, the board currently meets those restrictions, and asks that you approve these three appointments to the board.
Very good, thank you. These are all reappointments, and we know the individual's been working very hard up to this point, and we look forward to their continuing. I move that we approve Foxtrot Golf and Hotel.
Second.
We have a motion and a second any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item I, resolution reappointing Commissioner Michael B. O'Donnell II to the Chief Elected Officials Board.
Commissioner Mike Papun again. This is pursuant to our agreement involving the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. There are federal funds that get funneled into the state and then down to our local area four, and as part of this board, the county commission, and particularly the chairman, gets to appoint two members to this board. Commissioner Howell is currently a member of the board and was recently appointed to a three-year term. The recommendation today is to reappoint Commissioner Michael B. O'Donnell to this board, who filled the unexpired term of Commissioner Unruh previously to this. So resolutions in proper form, ask you to approve the resolution.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Keith Lawlin came to us recently and asked for us to fill these positions, because by the end of July, I believe, they have to make some recommendations, so it's important that we fill this position. I know that Commissioner Howell has served on it in the past and is going to continue to serve. I make a motion that we appoint Commissioner Michael O'Donnell to the Chief Elected Officials Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
New business, item J, recognition of Chief Judge Fleetwood for 22 years of service.
Thank you. Is Judge Fleetwood here? I do not see Judge Fleetwood.
He's retired.
Well, let me say a couple of things about Judge Fleetwood, then. First of all, he retired back on June 29th after more than 22 years of serving on the bench. I knew Judge Fleetwood from my experience working with scouting. He was running White Buffalo District when I was a commissioner for that district, and so I got to know him in several different aspects of his life, and I appreciate what he's been doing. He's the longest-serving chief judge in the 18th Judicial District, which is Sedgwick County. He first ran for election for district judge in 1996. Kansas Supreme Court appointed him chief judge in 2009. Under James Fleetwood's leadership, Sedgwick County was the first district court in the state to require electronic filing of court documents. Judge Fleetwood also oversaw the development of a paperless court system, a website that serves as a portal to the courts and self-help center for people trying to access a legal system on their own. Judge Fleetwood said that the goal has been to make the court system immediately available to lawyers as well as the public. As the chief judge, he had general control over case assignments within the district and general supervisor authority over the administrative and clerical functions of the court. Those duties were in addition to his judicial responsibilities. Although he retired from Sedgwick County bench, Judge Fleetwood is not leaving the court system. He will become a senior judge and will be appointed to the Supreme Court to work on an as-needed basis throughout the district and appellate courts statewide. So I want to take this opportunity to recognize Judge Fleetwood's service to the entire county over a number of years, appreciate his service. Since he retired, he may not be able to make it through security, so I don't quite know. That's what's wrong right now. But anyway, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank him for his service, and I'll make a motion that we receive and file.
Second, Ted.
We have a motion to receive and file, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item K, Safe Haven Law Presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning Commissioners, it's a delight to be here with you today. I am Diana Shunn, I'm the Executive Director for the Child Advocacy Center of Sedgwick County, and I would like to thank you for allowing me to speak this morning on behalf of the Wichita Coalition for Child Abuse Prevention. The Wichita Coalition Coalition for Child Abuse Prevention is a collective impact group with more than 116 representatives from 65 organizations formed to create and carry out initiatives as a community response to the cluster of eight child abuse fatalities in Wichita that were identified by the Wichita Eagle in 2008. Its mission is to empower organizations in Wichita to create an effective system to prevent child abuse and neglect. I'm here today to share with you specifically about safe havens and a potential impact that safe haven can have on child abuse and neglect in our community. Last year, the Coalition launched a campaign to create awareness that would designate safe havens in Wichita and Sedgwick County. The campaign is one of many efforts that the Coalition has launched to reduce child abuse and neglect in our area. All 50 states have passed laws designating to protect newborn children from injury and death caused by abandonment, and it exempts and relinquishes, relinquishes parents from prosecution according to certain guidelines. We felt that it was important to step up and let communities know about how safe havens can help protect babies. In 2013, Kansas Statute 382282, Safe Haven allows a parent or another person who has lawful custody of an infant, which is 60 days older, sorry, 60 days old or younger, and has not suffered any bodily harm or surrendered physical custody of the infant to an employee who is on duty at a fire station, city or county health department, or medical facility. An important aspect of creating awareness was the installation of outdoor signs. Lieutenant Mattern has an example of those signs, and they were placed at police and fire stations, as well as all the area hospitals and health departments. As you drive around the community, we hope that you will note the metal signs on these buildings. A safe haven could sometimes be confused with a safe place. You may see safe place signs typically at QuickTrip that designate areas for youth that are in crisis and oftentimes do not have a place to stay. Captain Travis Raikstra of the Wichita Police Department and Cindy Chapman of Wesley Medical Center were both instrumental in getting the signs installed, as well as providing training to the designated safe haven, so that staff would understand the process of what action to take when a baby is relinquished. Sidney Miles, who is the co-chair of the projects group, has been working to raise the $2,000 of private funding for the signage throughout the community. Implementation of the Kansas Safe Haven laws is critical to child abuse prevention strategy as we look at newborn babies- to child abuse prevention strategy as we look at newborn babies and our goal to educate the public as well as safe haven agencies. Since nineteen ninety-nine, four thousand and two babies across the country have been relinquished as a result of Safe Haven Act. It is our hope that as we create awareness about safe havens, that a parent who cannot take care of a newborn will choose to relinquish the child at a safe haven instead of leaving the child in an unsafe place such as a dumpster or a remote area. There is no, if there is no abuse, there is no blame. If you have questions about relinquishment, you can contact the Kansas Children's Service League. They have a twenty-four-hour help line that is one eight hundred children. I'd also like to recognize that Deputy Chief Stoltz, now your manager, was instrumental in the development and leadership of the coalition. So that is something that we are forever grateful as we've looked at those eight deaths specifically within our community. Lieutenant Dale Mattern serves as the commander of the Exploited and Missing Child Unit, and he is here today as well, available to answer questions. But I do want to thank you so much for time today to be able to present, and thank you for the support that you provide throughout the county to help us bring awareness to safe havens.
Well, I thank you, and Lieutenant Mattern, thank you very much for being here today. I serve on the Exploited and Missing Child Unit Board. I go over to the Child Advocacy Center. I see what you all do each and every day. This is an extension of that where we can protect newborns from being abandoned and most likely perish. So what you do is vital to our community, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Any other Commissioners have anything that they'd like to ask? Lieutenant, would you like to say anything this morning?
I just came in case there was questions that I could hopefully try and answer, so.
Very good. Well, thank you for what you do every day. I know it is truly heart-wrenching what you all see that the community doesn't see, and I appreciate you bringing that information to us so that we know what important work that you do each and every day. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
I have a motion and a second and any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Next item, please.
Item L, Consideration of a Funding Request by Opportunity Wichita for the Development of the Riverfront Legacy Master Plan.
Good morning, Brent.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. For the record, I'm Brent Shelton, Economic Development Director with the Division of Finance. The item before you is a request from a coalition of regional organizations for funding support of the visioning and planning process for developing the Riverfront Legacy Master Plan. The goal is to make this Riverfront Legacy Master Plan one that reflects the stated desires of the community and to create a comprehensive vision and a master plan for future development on the east bank of the Arkansas River. Basically, the area that you see in blue here, which is south of Douglas down to Kellogg and west and east from the river to Main Street. Now, this process is designed to include valuable public comment. It's being led by the Riverfront Legacy Master Plan Coalition, and their first meeting is scheduled for late afternoon, evening of July thirty-first, and more details will be coming as they are confirmed. The lead organizations in this coalition are Downtown Wichita, the Greater Wichita Partnership, Visit Wichita, Wichita Community Foundation, and the Wichita Regional Chamber of Commerce, and in collaboration with W, which is a community of young professionals and the Education Fund. So in response to Project Wichita's results and the Century Two Citizens Advisory Committee, these private sector organizations will work closely and transparently with public partners, the City of Wichita and Sedgwick County, throughout this process. Now specifically, Opportunity Wichita, which is a not-for-profit corporation, is the umbrella organization that oversaw Project Wichita, and they seek to contract with Populus Inc. for consulting and project management services for professional planning and design services to develop this Riverfront Legacy Master Plan. The engagement between Opportunity Wichita and Populus, which is a global architectural design firm, includes market value assessments by RCL Co., Real Estate Advisors, and design options by Olin Studio. Populus was chosen to continue and develop on its previous work in analyzing the east bank area. So as they're working toward a final concept master plan to connect this area with the proposed Ballpark Village on the river's west bank and with the greater downtown area, the project's going to consider things like Century Two, a new performing arts center, a convention center, the former municipal library, the water walk area, and additional public open space and urban design. Previous studies and previous community input are going to be used to guide this process. Again, it's being led by the private sector, and the process is designed to provide both articulate a vision and develop a funding and implementation strategy to guide the next steps in this regionally significant development opportunity. As we previously mentioned, a vital component of this is going to be community involvement. Led by the local firm Bothner and Bradley, an open and transparent facilitation process of engaging the public will involve open houses and walking tours in the area. Ongoing open houses and presentations with community leaders and elected officials from the city and the county, both throughout the process and throughout the community, will offer opportunities for communicating with the public and chances to receive feedback as plans are developed and finalized. All these coalition meetings are going to be open to the public. Now, as you all know, economic development opportunities follow talent, and enhancing and capitalizing on this region's unique quality of place will have a big impact on recruiting and maintaining this talent. One of the things we learned through Project Wichita was that the community wants the riverfront to be the best it can be for those of us that live and work here and those that will visit this community. The Riverfront Legacy Master, the Riverfront Master Plan Legacy Coalition is stepping up to do what's necessary to put the pieces together to create a bold and vision and design for the riverfront for today and for many tomorrows. Now, the budget for this six-to-seven-month design and visioning process is seven hundred thousand dollars, and as I've mentioned before, the public sector is leading this effort, but they're primarily funding this effort. They've come forward with about five hundred thousand dollars, and today Opportunity Wichita seeks funding support of a hundred thousand dollars. They received a hundred thousand dollars from the City of Wichita yesterday. It was approved unanimously. Today, they're seeking that same level of support from Sedgwick County. This contribution can be facilitated from our two thousand and nineteen budgeted funds in the county's Economic Development Fund. So by leveraging the county investment with the city and the private sector, Sedgwick County will contribute less than fifteen percent of the total budget for this project. Our participation in this partnership allows us to be a major part of the design and the implementation of this catalytic development potential along the Arkansas River, which continues to enhance the quality of place in our region. So at this time, I would recommend that you approve the contribution to provide funding support of a hundred thousand dollars to Opportunity Wichita to support the contracts for the visioning and master planning for the Riverfront Legacy Master Plan. I think we have some representatives here today that might also like to speak to this, so I will relinquish the lectern to them at this time.
Okay. Well, hold on just a second because I'm going to see if any of the Commissioners have anything that they've got questions on before you go away. Do any Commissioners have any questions whatsoever? It doesn't look like it. I know I serve on the executive board for GWP, and we've already voted in GWP for them to be a partner in this. I serve on the executive board for Visit Wichita, and they've already voted to support this. I know the City of Wichita voted yesterday to support this, so I don't have any questions because I've been briefed on it a number of times already. But I will now open it up to the public and see if they have any comments that they'd like to make.
Okay.
If you would state your name for the record, please.
Mr. Chairman, I am Jim Korok. I am acting as the Chair of the Visit Wichita and also representing the coalition today and members of the Riverfront Legacy Plan. I will have to say that Brent did a fantastic job of research, so some of what I'm going to share with you is probably repetitive from what you just heard. A number of our members are present today. If those members, if you could just raise your hand and let everybody know who's here. Fantastic. Thank you. As Brent mentioned, this is a group of members from Downtown Wichita Organization, the Greater Wichita Partnership, Wichita Community Foundation, and the Wichita Regional Chamber of Commerce, all working in collaboration with Young Professionals Group W and with the Wichita Educational Foundation. As a sign of the coalition's strength and unity, today we speak as one voice in support of this process. Today, we're here to ask the county partner with our coalition and the city and consider one hundred thousand dollar investment in the formation and work of this master planning process. Based on the input from Project Wichita, the Century Two Citizens Advisory Committee, and Project Downtown, this is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to set a vision for the riverfront in a way that we can all be proud of. It is a plan for today, a plan for the future, and it is a plan for our entire region. In particular, we believe it is an opportunity to continue to attract and retain talent while building a unique and authentic vision for the east bank of our great river. Rather than starting from scratch, the coalition's desire is to build on important work that's been done over the last several years. This will be an opportunity to take those reports and findings and unite them in a comprehensive framework. This is the first time that we have derived a comprehensive master plan for this area. This work will, first, capitalize on the prior information and analysis. Second, it will apply it cohesively and comprehensively to the whole area. Thirdly, it'll identify a final concept for convention and performing arts, and last, it will provide funding and implementation strategies so that our community can take actionable steps forward. In order to build efficiently on this prior work, the coalition intends to utilize internationally celebrated architectural firm Populus, which worked in Wichita on some of those plans. They've put together the Dream Team, including RCL Co., which specializes in market-driven analysis, Olin, a worldwide leader in architectural design. Furthermore, the plan is expected to connect with the work visibly underway on the west bank. By building on this previous work and investing in this plan ourselves, we believe we'll be able to steward and maximize the value of previous investments in the area over the past several years. Community engagement and transparency is absolutely at the heart of this process. We promise to build multiple opportunities for the public to witness the process and voice their input for the future of our riverfront. We'll plan to have many opportunities for our community to weigh in on the process with their hopes and dreams and express those in the future of this space. Again, it is important to note that the coalition meetings are one hundred percent open to the public, and we look forward to working with Populus and Bothner and Bradley to intentionally bring the public into this process. As mentioned, we plan to host the first public meeting on July thirty-first. We'll be in touch with the community as those details are solidified. Our hope is that this does not play out into a long engagement and that we will have a plan together in just six to seven months, wrapping up in early two thousand and twenty. Additionally, we would like the county to sit at the coalition table and partner with our entities to help move this conversation forward. And, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we'd ask that you appoint a member of the commission to represent itself on the coalition board. In closing, thank you for the opportunity to present these remarks on behalf of the entire coalition, and I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have or defer to somebody more knowledgeable on a question you may have in the audience. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the Commissioners? I have one question for legal. As Jim said, we need to appoint someone from this board to serve on that. Do we need to add that in the motion at the end of this on who we're going to appoint?
No, I don't believe you'd need to do that at this time. We can bring back a motion later for an appointment if you'd prefer, Chairman, or you can do that.
Would it be just smooth, just as part of the motion?
You can do that if you'd prefer, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We will, I think we'll probably get you someone today so that you know who to work with.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay. Scott, would you like to speak? Please state your name for the record.
Scott. Good morning, Commissioner Scott Schwinnemann-Pass, co-chair of Project Wichita. I just wanted to speak in support of the funding that they're requesting this morning. In Project Wichita, I'll just give you a little history. It's pretty recent past history, but a year ago, you know, citizens were looking and giving us information on Project Wichita about what needed to be done in our region, and this was one of the top priorities that they felt we needed to be looking at. We started with a vision of a green space anywhere from Kellogg all the way to Thirteenth along our river corridor. But as we worked in Project Wichita and we honed that down, what we're working on today with the Riverfront Legacy Project is really what the first step of that needs to be, and we would love to see you fund and support that to help move that forward. There was over fourteen thousand citizens who participated in that, that study of Project Wichita who helped us in this area. Earlier today, you heard about behavioral health and mental health, and that was another one, and we applaud the Project Wichita, co-chairs applaud the commission and your support of that, too. But this here is just as an important issue for us to move forward in this community. Your impact and your help in moving this forward doesn't just impact Wichita or Sedgwick County. It impacts the whole South Central Kansas region. When we were interviewing people and listening to people at Project Wichita, we kept hearing people refer to their river, and these were people from McPherson, from El Dorado, from Winfield and other places. And we kept thinking, okay, what's the river going through their city? Well, the river they're referring to is the river that runs through the middle of Wichita, and so it is not just a thing for Wichita or for Sedgwick County. It is a regional impact, and so I think it's critical that we get this right, that we have a master plan that everybody understands, and the transparency that will go with this project and the input that can be given. You will come with a very good plan that will march us forward into the future and really make the region an attractive place to youth and to our future employees. So any questions from the Commissioners?
Thank you, Scott. Any questions for Scott?
Thank you.
Seeing none. Thank you. Anyone else like wish to speak? Please state your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Darryl Kelly, and I work for Credit Union of America, and I am a young professional reporting for duty. As a military veteran, please excuse some of my military lingo today. You see, we have a fleet of young professionals all over the city, county, and region that are mobilized and ready to act swiftly and deliberately. The time for talking is done. We are strategic with our actions and want to be allies in the progression of our great area. We are armed with talent and energy, and we share the same core values and standards of living. We are not bright-eyed and bushy-tailed. We understand the challenges and financial implications and want to work alongside you to tackle them head-on. These decisions are critical to retain, attract, and develop young professional talent. I think the main thing we want to convey is we are not afraid because we know that the future of our children and our children's children depends on our decisions today. We are at the right time. We have the right people. We have the bold ideas. We respectfully request the approval of these funds to continue with the vital planning. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you for your service to our community.
Darryl, thank you very much for being here today, and thank you for your service to our country. I don't see any questions. Anyone else wish to speak? I see no one else who wishes to speak. I'll bring it back to the board. I'll start then, since no one's turned on their light. As I said, I've been briefed on this. This is my third time of being briefed on this because of the different committees that I sit on. And as we look forward to where the City of Wichita and this entire region is going with things like the Intrust Bank Arena, with things like the ballpark that's being put in, and now trying to look at what needs to be done with performing arts and with the convention center, this is an exciting time. the convention center, this is an exciting time, honestly, to be here in this region to see what our community can be in the future. We have one opportunity right now to take this entire region into the next 50 years, and we can't squander that one opportunity that we have. I really and truly appreciate the fact that this is primarily funded by the private community. They did not ask the public to support the entire burden of taking a look at what we need to do for the next 50 years here in this region. So, I am a supporter of this plan that we've got. I do believe that we need to move forward with this study to make sure that we get it right because we have one chance now to get it right. I also am very happy that Sedgwick County is going to be at the table, so I'd like to make kind of a two-part motion. The first part is to approve the funding, and the second part is to appoint Commissioner Michael O'Donnell to serve on the committee. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Do we have a motion and a second? Commissioner Meister, you have anything?
Yeah, I just would like to thank you for everything you said, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Darrell, and everybody that spoke. I'm really happy that Sedgwick County as a body is taking this, a small piece of participation in the county, in this project, in this region, and I think it helps send a message to the community that not only all the great things that you guys are doing from the private sector-led, as Chairman suggested, but it also shows that not only is the city of Wichita participating in a small percentage, but Sedgwick County is now in this game, too, to help make that block something special for the future. And I really am happy for you all, and I'm glad that it's a bold timeline, six, eight months. I'm glad it's public meetings you're going to have, and so, and I'm trusting and hopeful that your leadership will be able to deliver a good product at the end of this six, eight month period. So I will be fully supportive. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I'll start off by making a couple of quick comments, and I have a couple of questions as well. But first of all, I think this is good that, and I think the community is very aware, we've had a very long discussion going on. And one thing I think that this is, that's very positive about this today is that moves us to a conclusion. There's been discussions about Century Two going back for quite a number of years at this point, and there's been discussions about performing arts and convention center and things like that, which I think would probably be part of the focus of this study. And I think the intent of this study is to get us to an endpoint that leaders like ourselves today and the public would actually have input on whether we move forward or not on those conclusions. And so I do like the idea that this is getting us to a conclusion. I think it's certainly time to do that. So I really do appreciate the leaders bringing this to us and getting us to an endpoint. Second of all, I really like the public-private partnership on this. The reality is that, as already stated, we're providing a little bit less than 15% of the total funding, and the majority of the funds come from private sector. I think that is actually a great model. We heard, recently, we heard a model about how Omaha does some of their, some of their community development, and it was really a very interesting discussion down at the old downtown library. We had that discussion there, and it was eye-opening, and I think this is kind of moving in that direction. So I think this is really refreshing to see maybe a different way of doing things in Wichita and Sedgwick County. So I think that's actually very positive. I do have two questions, and I'm not sure who in the audience would want to answer these questions, but I'll just simply ask them and see who responds. So first question, of course, would be Century Two. I don't think we have any conclusions on Century Two, but I would like to know, there is no preconceived ideas on what's going to happen with Century Two. The study will essentially assess that and get us to a recommendation on what to do with Century Two. Is that true? Can someone please speak to that?
Jeff, could you state your name for the record, please?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, Mr. County Manager, Jeff Flure, the Great Wichita Partnership at Downtown Wichita, were part of the coalition. And, Mr. Commissioner, you're correct, there is not a preconceived, the process with the community will determine what the next steps would be with that particular piece of the master plan process. So there are no preconceptions about anything. This is an opportunity to build upon the information, the great data that we have. One of the things I just note is that we're pursuing here a platform like we did with Project Downtown, that it will be based upon the market, and it will then build a vision around that. And the success of that plan for the last nine years is now approaching almost three-quarters of a billion dollars of investment, and so the same type of application here is being applied. So we expect to have great success as a community in moving the vision forward, but also implementing it as well in what the community determines to be that plan.
Thank you. Along that line, I guess in Kansas, we're not allowed to have referendums, so we can't put this out to the public to say, what would you like to see us do? That's not legal in Kansas. But to the extent the public has access to these meetings, these are open, transparent meetings, they can certainly engage the conversation as much as they want to. So I guess as the public continues to engage these meetings and provide input, in a sense, this will be democratically driven, I assume, by the participation in those meetings.
Correct. I mean, we want to gain, we want to garner the input of the community and what their thought process is. I think it's an opportunity for us to really look at options on how we move things forward. We did that with Project Downtown, and it opened up a lot of new opportunities that we hadn't thought about. Some we had, and some, in those conversations, it helped us even enhance some even greater. One of the great things about this coalition that you have is that each one of our organizations, and also working with the city and the county, we have great communication teams. All those teams are coming together. So you've got seven different groups coming together with your communications networks, if you will. Some of them overlap, some do not. And so therefore, we're going to be able to really tap, I think, into the community, as Mr. Swindeman said, with Project Wichita, we had over 14,000 people participate in that project. I think that we'll have a great engagement here as well because, again, of all these networks and this coalition that's come together to really drive the success of this opportunity.
Very good. Well, thank you for that. And then I would just, an observation, but I guess Wichita did vote yesterday, and they're going, they're planning to use the bed tax revenue for this, their $100,000 of support, is that correct?
I believe it's out of the transit, and Susie, yes. I'm sorry. Yes, transit gas tax. Yes, sir.
So I guess just an observation, but that's paid for primarily by people who are visiting our community, so that's certainly seems reasonable. That would also be the same type of audience, I think it would be traveling to Wichita to use whatever facilities are ultimately developed in the east bank. So that does make sense. And of course, our funding question today is our Economic Development Fund, which is sourced from property tax funds. And so our $100,000 essentially taxes all Sedgwick County citizens property taxes based on their ability to pay as they own property. And our $100,000 essentially is our local investment on behalf of Wichita and Sedgwick County. I guess I see that we're doing this, I guess, on behalf of all property taxpayers across the entire county, including the city of Wichita. So that seems, seems like we would, I guess I just make that point, that this is not, this is not visitors paying this, this is our local residents, essentially, their investment in this study to get us to the endpoint. So that, that does make sense, I suppose. And I don't really have anything else to say other than I'm looking forward to the end, and that it's time for us to move forward. So thank you for the presentation today. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In regards to the way that we fund this, kind of piggybacking on what Commissioner Howell just said, would it be possible for us to take some of the money that we receive from Kansas Star Casino dispersments every month, which is entertainment tax, and use that money to fund this?
Well, that's going into the general fund.
Right, I understand that.
And this is coming out of the general fund, so...
But, but it is different than property tax dollars. It is, it is similar to what Wichita did yesterday. It looks like we have our CFO?
CFO.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsay Proruso, your CFO. Yes, we can certainly earmark those funds if you would like. That is not a typical approach to how we do things in the county general fund, but we can certainly earmark a portion of those revenues toward that end out of the general fund, that economic development program.
Let me ask you a question. When we pass a budget, we have X number of dollars, and we can't go in and say we're going to spend beyond what our budget is.
Correct.
And those funds that, when we pass a budget, we've got certain pots of money that we can tap into. Can we just tap into the general fund without already having something there?
Well, Commissioner, the economic development program is actually housed in the general fund, and so for this, what we would be accessing is about that $1.8 million worth of contractual budget authority that is budgeted there. We don't necessarily tie that budget authority to specific revenue like we're talking about with gaming revenues, but in this case, we can say that we've earmarked the receipts of those gaming revenues toward that expense from the county general fund from that economic development program budget.
But it's all one big fund.
It is, that's correct. It's all fungible.
Some of it is, comes from Kansas Star Casino, some of it comes from property tax.
Right.
I guess if we want to say that it came from Kansas Star Casino, but I don't know what benefit that is.
Well, it's about the argument of people talking about where their property tax dollars are going, and that's money we get every month. And it's similar to the position the Wichita City Council had yesterday, which they took money out of the bed tax that they receive from people that are coming to Wichita, staying a lot of times, obviously paying that bed tax for entertainment value or for whatever travel reason they're coming to Wichita. This would be that same type of argument that people are going to Kansas Star Casino. A lot of people from Sedgwick County go down there, three-quarters or so of the people, they're paying that tax, but that's, it's a different fund than property tax dollars. So I think it takes away any type of negative stigma that people think their property taxes need to go to roads, public safety, mental health, those core services. It's all, I understand it's all semantics, but that was just one question I had. But the other thing, I just wanted to thank you for your support of me and faith in me for putting me on that committee.
Thank you.
And I think it is important, being someone that's grown up in South Sedgwick County, represents South Sedgwick County, that South Sedgwick County continues to have a voice in a lot of these projects. I feel like oftentimes, we have so many community leaders that might live north of Kellogg or in Commissioner Meister's district, potentially, and, which is a good thing, but, which is a very good thing. In fact, I'm his deputy, right, Pete? So he's my life coach, I'm his deputy, we have a great gig going. But, but what I think is important is that South Wichita and South Sedgwick County feels like they have a voice in the process, and I'm honored to be a part of that voice for South Wichita.
Thank you. And I will amend my motion then to say that the funding source will be out of Kansas Star Casino proceeds.
Oh, well, thank you.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that amended motion.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
So, piggybacking off of what Commissioner O'Donnell said, who is on this committee, and what is the makeup of it? I think it's important, since this is a huge decision for the next 50 years, I want to make sure that we have an accurate representation of both male, female, all races and ethnicities. So I would like to table this until, appointing Michael, until we figure out, I don't even know who's on it. Nobody's even informed me about it. So is that something that I could find out? And how was it selected?
Susie, can you state your name for the record?
Sure. Hi, Susie Santo with Visit Wichita. I'm part of the coalition. We may need to get that back to you, but Evan's here as well to add, but right now on the coalition, the parties that we've talked about, Visit Wichita, the representative are Jim Corrick and myself. Jim, you heard from earlier. Do you have the whole list of them? I may have to pull Jeff up. We have the Community Foundation, Shelley Pritchard. So I do think with, in WAME Chambers. With the chamber, we have Gary Plummer, we also have Michael Monte Frante, and Darrell, who you heard from earlier, we're representing W. Do you want to continue to add?
Sure. Downtown Wichita, you have, the chairman there is Don Sherman, and the lead there would be Jason Gregory as the staff. On the partnership, you have myself, you have Evan Roselle as far as staff, and then also Charlie Chandler and John Roth. And I believe that's, everyone is named at that point, the five, those are the five groups as far as the coalition members. And then now, with you all today, would be Commissioner O'Donnell, and then yesterday they have Brandon Johnson will serve from the council. So that's the makeup of the coalition.
So two women, two, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine men?
Part of this goes back to the composition of who's the board chair of these different organizations and who the CEOs are. So it really took the CEO and then the chairman of the board, whoever that may be, on these respective organizations, that's the coalition membership. And then in addition to that, again, would be the public sector and who you all appointed today, and also city council yesterday.
Okay.
Other questions?
Nope.
Commissioner Howell?
With regard to the funding, thank you, Chairman. With regard to the funding, I think this is, this is a, I guess I don't support the change in the motion. I think the original intent of the legislature that provided 1% revenue from the Kansas Star Casino was to help replace and help treat, if you will, the consequences of what would happen to Sedgwick County. And that money currently is being used for general fund spending, but in my mind, it's already being used for mental health, substance abuse treatments, things like that. So in a sense, if it makes someone feel better to make this tweak to the motion, that's fine. But honestly, this is still the same thing as general fund, property taxes, it's the same, same source of funding. So I don't know that I... I'll repeat some of what I just said. Thank you, Chairman. I don't know that I support the change in the motion because I believe the intent of the legislature was to provide revenue back to Sedgwick County for treatment, gambling addictions, substance abuse, other types of treatments in Sedgwick County. Currently, that revenue is being used for all kinds of community services and same as property taxes would be. So it all essentially is the same fund. And so in my mind, it doesn't make me feel any better necessarily to designate this as casino funds, but I think that's an unnecessary change. But from the eyes of the people who live in Sedgwick County, they need to realize that our revenue comes from the casino, that's true, and from property taxes, that's true. And all these things go together, one gigantic pot of money that provides services to Sedgwick County citizens. And so it doesn't really, it doesn't really make me feel better to designate this, but I'll still support the motion, but I don't know that this really changes it in my mind. This is still property tax funds. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's fine, if we want to reamend the motion to take that off, if it'd make Commissioner Howell feel better, but since he had brought up the fact that Wichita was using a bed tax, that's where I thought, okay, we can, we can do the casino, but I'm fine with removing that stipulation if you want.
Very good. Okay, other comments?
Mr. Chairman, just as a point of clarification, did Commissioner Cruz, were you wanting to make a motion or substitute motion to table this, or are you...
I just want to point out that there are only two men, there are two women on that board. That's kind of what I was pointing out. So whether I need to, I mean, I'm fine with it if that's what you guys are fine with, but I want to make that point that, you know, just because there aren't CEOs that are women, I mean, there are other women who are capable of doing this work, and it's important that when 51% of our community are female, 50% of them should be represented on this committee. That's my point that I'm trying to make.
Are you okay with voting? One other meeting, I goofed up and didn't recognize that you were trying to make a substitute motion, so I want to make sure that you're okay with us pressing for it.
Well, if this body is okay with appointing another man to the board, then that's fine.
Okay, very good. And we'll go back to the amended motion then, and I'd like to rescind the amended motion and go back to the original motion. Everybody understand the original motion? It was a two-part motion. One is to approve the funding, the second is to approve Commissioner O'Donnell to serve on the committee.
And then who's going to second?
Say that again?
Then we need a second.
And we, and...
The original second was Commissioner Meister.
You're going to second that?
Second.
Original motion, okay. Are we legal? Very good. I see no further discussion. Madam Clerk, call the hall.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meister?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Thank you all for being here this morning. We appreciate you taking time out of your very busy schedule to be in here. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item M, resolution establishing township treasurer bond requirements.
And Justin, if you wait just a second?
We will.
I will. Need a second. Okay. Email.
Morning Commissioners, Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor. What's in front of you today is an item that was in front of you back on June 12th, and you'd actually deferred to today. Some of the background is that KSA 80203 provides the township treasurers shall execute a bond to the state of Kansas in the amount determined by the Board of County Commissioners. The amount and sufficiency of the bond is to be approved by you as well. This bond would essentially act as an insurance policy that could apply in the event of, you know, malfeasance or negligence perhaps by a township treasurer and the handling of the township's finances. Essentially, it would be there to protect the township's finances and their taxpayers in those situations. Historically, county staff was really unable or unaware of any prior efforts by the Board of County Commissioners to have established this bond, or when I say not efforts, I don't, we're not aware of any resolutions that have established this bond requirement. The resolution that's in front of you today proposes the establishment of a $10,000 corporate surety bond requirement that would apply to all 26 townships within Sedgwick County. The county clerk's office, after the June 12th meeting, contacted all the township treasurers, and before doing that, they did reach out to some companies that provide these bonds and found that the cost for a township treasurer bond of $10,000 would be somewhere in the range of $100 to $150 for a four-year term. After contacting those township treasurers, again, all 26 of them, there were written responses from four different township treasurers, which are included in your backup materials. None of those four responses indicated any opposition to the establishment of a requirement of a bond or the dollar amount that was proposed. Two of the townships said that they already have bonds in place, one of those even actually has it right at $10,000. Also, the county clerk's office is currently in the process of helping out townships with their budgets, and estimated that approximately 10 of these townships, they already have some sort of township treasurer bond in place. So this wouldn't be an entirely new process for those particular townships either. The, in terms of the responses, there's also, you know, some comments about their wanting it to apply across the board, which that is proposed in the resolution that's in front of you, and one of the other responses that was more detailed indicated that they were not opposed to the establishment of a requirement, they thought perhaps if a taxing, if a budget for a township was below $500,000, perhaps there didn't need to be a treasurer bond requirement. And again, the recommended action on this is the approval of the resolution that's in front of you, which would establish a $10,000 corporate surety bond requirement, and it's a simple majority vote to approve the resolution. I'd be happy to stand for any questions, the county clerk's office has Chief Deputy Clerk Karen Bailey here as well, if you have any questions for her. Thank you.
Questions for Justin this morning? I don't see any questions. Like to adopt the resolution establishing a requirement for treasurer bond for the townships for all districts.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Thank you Commissioners.
Justin, appreciate it.
We got a call. He's right here.
Okay, next item, please.
He's here.
Would you like to vote on?
I heard that, aye, if I can. Okay. If I vote. Sorry.
All right, Joe, I want to tell you, we're going to recess after this, so you stay up there, so that you don't have to wait around.
Yes, sir.
So, we're going to go through all bids and contracts for both this and Fire District.
Okay.
You're on.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts results in five items that we'd like to present to you for your approval. Item number one is a bridge improvement, and this is the bridge located on Hydralisk between 69th and 77 Streets North. This recommendation is to accept the low bid from King Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $1,495,163.25. Now, the approval of this item will be contingent on your acceptance or approval of the CIP amendment that will be considered in the consent agenda, item Q. Item number two is the on-call architectural and engineering services for facilities, project services. Recommendation is to accept the proposals from Haney and Associates Architects, Schaefer Johnson Cox Fry Architecture, and Spangenberg Phillips Teis LLC, they're doing business as Spangenberg Phillips Teis Architecture. And we're going to establish contracted hourly rates as shown on the table for a period of three years with two one-year options to renew. Item number three are MRO, which is maintenance, repair, and operation supplies for facilities maintenance, and this recommendation is to accept the University of California's purchasing agreement 2018.000208 with Fastenal Company, and again, it's for the MRO supplies and related services. Item number four, food staples for juvenile detention facility for Department of Corrections. This recommendation is to accept the best proposal from Emporia Wholesale Coffee, they're doing business as EVCO Wholesale Food Corporation, and this is to establish contract pricing for two years with three one-year options to renew. And finally, item number five is the 2019 Dodge Durangle Pursuit Vehicles for Fleet Management and Sheriff's Office. The recommendation is to utilize the state of Kansas contract 45698 and accept the pricing from Davis Moore Incorporated in the total amount of $63,009.36. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of all five items.
Thank you, Joe, I have questions on two of the items. The first one is item two, the on-call architectural services. If they're on-call, and we have folks that bid less than other folks did, that aren't being selected, why don't we say that they're on-call, all of them, rather than singling out some of them that are actually higher than the ones that didn't get the bid? I just, it doesn't make sense to me.
Well, the review committee looked at the history of their previous interactions with the vendors, and found that these three vendors would be the ones that they preferred to contract with, and instead of having all, I believe there were six responses, to manage, they decided these top three would be the ones, if I'm not speaking.
But how do you ever get your foot in the door if we don't say that they're going to have an option? How are you going to ever say that you got an opportunity to compete if we don't give them a chance? Just because in the past, we've had someone that did a good job, doesn't mean that someone else can't do a good job.
Amen to that.
Hi, Valerie Castor, Project Services Manager. We made our selection based upon, multiple criteria went into it, the cost was one of the things we looked at, but it was also not just history that we've had specifically with each firm, but it was their overall history as a firm and the products that they've delivered on other projects outside of Sedgwick County. So we didn't want to award to all six because we thought that would give the idea to all six that we would be utilizing all of them, and kind of a false hope. So that's why we selected three, we went in with the idea of selecting three at the beginning, and we put that in our request for bids, or request for proposal information.
But what happens if you take all six? Is there a detriment to that?
The only detriment would be that the idea of potentially promising work to someone that they're never going to get.
Well, they're never going to get anything now.
Oh. I suppose we could change it if.
Commissioner O'Donnell has a question.
Yeah, thanks Valerie. I guess what confuses me is that I see on the three that you selected, some of them, like for Haney, it's $65 for the project architect, so they were the lowest on that, and then Schaefer Johnson Cox Fry were the cheapest on like civil engineer, so I see that we have the lowest bid on some of those items, but it just, it does baffle me the way that this is handled. How many other, and I guess maybe this is follow-up for Mr. Thomas, actually, so you can't answer this, but how often, Mr. Thomas, do we select three people when we go out for stuff? Is that just for architectural services, or, because normally, it's, we select one, and it's the low bid?
Quite a few times on on-call services, we've done that. I think in the past, we've done that on plumbing, we've done that on electrical services, and the reason on those particular ones is at times when we contact just one vendor, their work schedule may be such that they can't handle the immediate needs that we have. These are needs that are above just a regular maintenance that we can supply. So we find it, based on past experience, best to have at least two, and on plumbing and electrical, as I said, are two examples where we've done that.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see if, because now we kind of know the ballpark of what all these different architectural companies charge, that if we had a rate of what the county would pay, similar to like what government does for, say Medicaid or services, they say, we're going to, we're going to pay people this much and set our own fees, and then have people bid off of that, because we kind of know what the, what the range is here. Because if we're going to use, for example, civil engineer, are we going to use Haney, or are we going to go down to SJCF because they're the cheapest? Because there's a huge disparity in just the civil engineer cost.
Right. And I think many times on these services, just not strictly civil engineer, it's a combination of several.
But how do we know that?
Well, we usually have some idea of what the project's going to entail when we begin it, and then there's other factors that go into it, such as what's going on with that firm at the time, and how, what their workload looks like, our timeline for getting this work done. There's multiple considerations every time a new project is started.
Yeah, I get that, but when, like, project manager, for example, at Haney versus SJCF, it's twice as much. So are we going to use project manager, like, if we need somebody, you know, or interior design, I mean, it just, it's a strange menu that we have here, and fee schedule, where it's cheaper for some, more expensive for others. So if we're going to be pushing this forward, how do we know that we're getting the low bid on that particular item?
Point out another detail, when it comes to certain projects, we put a stipulation in the RFP that if any project was between, greater than $50,000 but less than $350,000, we would have all three of the firms submit a quote, and so then we would have a schedule of quotes based on what was needed per hour, and that would give added flexibility to choosing the one that was in the best interest of the county. Also, if a project runs above $350,000, all bets are off, we don't use the on-call, we just submit a traditional process bid and allow all bidder architects to have an opportunity to bid on those projects. So we haven't limited all architectural services to just these three, we do have some criteria in which we have the ability to get a quote, or to completely go beyond what we've recommended here and have a separate quotation for the larger projects. Am I correct?
So for Spangenberg Phillips Teis Architecture, it's more expensive across the board than Crable, so why aren't we going with a lower bid there? Why are we selecting the most?
I think because the differential between a bid and a proposal, sir, if this was strictly a bid, we would be low bid, low price, but as Valerie mentioned, the criteria is not, cost was, how many points out of that, was it 15, 20? Okay, we could check on that, but with a proposal, cost is not the determinant factor, and as mentioned, there are other factors that we look at, look at, so that's why we made this a proposal as opposed to a bid. Had it been a bid, yes, we would go with strictly low price.
Yeah, well, the differentiation that, I mean, I'm confused about that, I thought, I thought we always went for lowest price.
That's only in a bid situation.
We've been fighting for two years over trash bags, because of price, and now we're saying price isn't an issue.
Price is an issue on proposals, but not the determining factor, because on proposals which are more complex projects, just getting the low bid doesn't mean you get the best solution to the problem.
But isn't that the same thing with any bid, just because it's the lowest, doesn't mean it's the best with, with purchasing anything?
If, if we have a bid with spec, we can, in a bid, we can define specifications, and then by those specifications, we know whether a bid is responsive or not, and then we go by the low price, whereas a proposal, which is not always something we can put specific, detailed specifications.
Because we don't know what the project's going to be at this point.
Yes.
I know, but still, cost.
Cost is important, yes, sir. Could I recommend, and just, just my recommendation, that we maybe defer to look at it further based on some of the questions you have?
My question, is there a time constraint on this? Can we defer this thing?
I don't, yes, there's no time constraint.
All right, when we get ready, and let's question, any more questions from the Commission first on this item? When we get ready to vote, I think we'll defer this one.
Okay, sir.
Okay. My second question then is on item five, on a 2019 Dodge Durangle Pursuit Vehicle. Question is that, it says, it specified, Dodge Durangle Pursuit Vehicle, and I don't understand why that we can't say that any vehicle is going to serve the needs of this request. Why does it have to be a Dodge Durangle Pursuit Vehicle? Why can't it be a Ford, a Chevy, any other vehicle? What you're, tell us that you're eliminating is a Chevrolet Impala and a Ford Freestar, which is kind of a funky-looking minivan, and the thing that you say in your description is that you're giving this to the sheriff's office, Investigative Law Enforcement Bureau, and they have a responsibility for case follow-up, they spend a great time in vehicles, going to and from interviews of crime, witnesses, handling of evidence, traveling to the Regional Forensic Science Center, other outside agencies, and various judicial facilities. So I don't see any description in there that says that they need a pursuit vehicle. In addition, it says that in the past, the vehicles that they were using weren't even close to pursuit vehicles, so I can't understand why we specified it has to be this vehicle. And the answer I got the other day was because they were cheaper, well, I don't know if they might be cheaper than a Chevy Cavalier or something, because that may be what they need. So don't tell me that we're looking at price, because we're not looking at price if we're looking at a pursuit vehicle.
Good morning, Penny Pollan, Fleet Management. In 2012, the sheriff's department did an evaluation for their vehicles because Ford quit producing the Crown Beck. So at that point, they tried numerous vehicles, and they decided to have a mixed fleet of sedans and SUVs. So when they started out, it was the Dodge Charger and the Chevy Tahoe. In 2014, the Chevy Tahoe increased in price, so they transitioned to a Ford Interceptor, and now they've increased their price. So the Dodge Durango, they want to see if they can test it to see if it will work as in maneuverability and flexibility with cargo space into their pursuit fleet. So since this is a test, we're going to buy two and put it in the fleet, they won't be pursued in the testing period.
Well, if we're going to buy something for a test, and you want a pursuit vehicle, why are we giving them to investigations then that are going to be driving around at the Regional Forensic Science Center?
So when a vehicle in the sheriff's department comes up for replacement, we replace, I meet with them and decide, and we discuss what their needs are, and then we, we take those vehicles, retire them out of the fleet, and then bring in those new ones, the sheriff then reassigns them as needed in their organization.
But a Ford Freestar worked before. If you looked at a Ford Freestar, it's real far from a pursuit vehicle of anything I've ever seen in my life.
That's correct. The driver of this, the Freestar, will not be driving the Durango. They will move that into their fleet and assign it as they see fit. These are just two vehicles that are being replaced. So those vehicles will move down based on how they need it.
Hey. I don't have any other questions, I'm just not ready to approve it right now. I think we need a lot more information on why we need two Dodge Durangle Pursuit Vehicles.
Chairman, I tried to contact the sheriff, both he and Colonel Power are out of town, perhaps I'd recommend we defer this for a week and get sheriff or undersheriff back in to further explain.
Very good. And it may be something we need in the future to make a decision, but I think I'm much more comfortable deferring it for another week. Do any other Commissioners have anything else on boards, bids, and contracts that they got questions on? I don't see anything. Commissioner O'Donnell?
None on board.
Okay. What I'd like to do is approve the recommendations of the boards and bids and contracts, with the exception of the on-call architectural engineering and the 2019 Dodge Durango.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And at this time, I'd like to recess the Board of County Commissioners meeting for July 10th, and call to order the governing body of Fire District Number One. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present.
Roll call.
Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommend consent items O through AI.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Go right.
Recommending, sir, consent items O through AI be approved.
Very good. Move to approve Oscar through Alpha India with the exception of item Sierra.
Yes.
Second?
We have a motion and a second?
Second, yeah, sorry.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Please call item Sierra.
Agreement of use of Coleman Parking Lot for the Fourth and Long Foundation Charity Fund Raising Event.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Thank you, Mr. Chair. We actually have a representative in the audience, and he's been here all day, so thank you for coming, but it's Joshua Blick, who is resident of District Two, but he's also my appointee to the MAPC. So thank you for coming, sitting through this meeting today, Josh, but if you would like to talk about, I believe it's the 25th anniversary, you told me.
Yes, correct. My name's Joshua Blick. About three years ago, I purchased the automobile Moonlight Car Show. We formed a 501(c) charity, and so all of our proceeds all go to nonprofits, local charities that we have in our community. This is our 25th anniversary. We take over about two miles of downtown, two square miles of downtown Wichita, from Broadway all the way to Washington, from Douglas to Second Street. And we start at six o'clock in the morning, start setting up, all the cars start showing up at four o'clock, and then we party till midnight. And then most people drag Douglas afterwards. If you guys are in the crowd and remember Dragon Douglas, my parents met Dragon Douglas, and I met my wife cruising Seneca. So we were in high school together, but we couldn't do it with all of our sponsorships, all of our volunteers, our community partnerships. And then the biggest thing is, is with our partnerships and then also the support of the county. So we really appreciate allowing us to use Coleman Parking Lot, and that's gonna help us with overflow with cars and all that. So last year, we used it, and it was, it was amazing, and so it really helped us out. So definitely enjoy it, and it's a, it's, we got a lot of cars coming from out of state. I got cars coming from New York. They called me today. They're traveling right now, and some really big cars. I got Top Fuel Dragsters coming down and some really big-name things. But it's not only just for cars, there's also a lot of kids' things. We have valve cover racing, we have hot wheel racing, so we got a lot of different things from all ages, and we'd just love to have you guys come out also.
That's awesome. Well, thank, thank you for your service. Are you getting Commissioner Dennis to bring down his Corvette collection?
He might. I think he's got a few of them, so, yeah.
Yeah, and Commissioner Meitzner offered to bring his Altima, too, so.
His Altima. We'll have a place for you.
And, and his, and his Surrey, his four-seat bike. So, so, yeah. But, but no, thank you for that, Josh.
Yeah, thank you again.
And thank you for serving on the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission as well.
Yep.
So with that, I would like to make a motion that we approve item S. Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Second motion. Any discussion on that? First of all, before I go into call the vote, I thank you very much for being here today and sitting through everything for us to get down to this portion. I guess probably, it's probably a good idea if Commissioner Meitzner enters his Altima, because parking down there is very difficult.
Yes.
When, because there are a ton of people come downtown. But if you want to see some beautiful cars, and I'm a car guy, and I love beautiful cars, that, that is definitely the place to be. So thank you very much for taking that over and keeping automobile alive. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you again. Appreciate it.
With that, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I would like to bring up an off-agenda item if, if now would be an appropriate time.
Okay.
It's regarding the, the flooding issue once again down in Dur, well, the, the area in between Hayesville and Derby. I know we've debated this numerous times now here on the bench. Commissioner Howell and myself went down to Salem Township last night, met with a number of the residents, and they expressed a desire, they understand that one of the pumps is inoperable right now, and they've expressed a desire. In fact, they even talked about funding it themselves, finding a way to do that, to turn on the one pump that does work if we can get Derby to do that. And I told them that I would make that motion today, that we would request that we turn on the one pump, and we don't know if it's number 10 or number 11. Is that right, Mr. Spears? One, one of them's inoperable.
I believe it is the south pump that works.
But we don't know what number that is.
I don't know the number.
So, anyway, I, I had told those residents that we would, that I would ask about turning it on for a minimum of 60 days and then review it, see if there has been any impact. But they're still, they had another inch and a half of rain come Saturday, and I, they're at, they're, their emotions are continually getting worn down by the amount of flooding that are in these houses. And now, being down there, seeing the ditches, talking to them again, I, I told them that I would make that motion today, Mr. Chair.
So is that a long motion to have an off-agenda item?
Oh, yeah. Yes, sorry. Yes, sorry. That's step one. So can I have an off-agenda item, Mr. Chair? Does that make a motion?
Very good. And was that a second?
Yes, a second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for an off-agenda item. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Okay.
So now you've heard that, that, that long, similar motion, but that we would turn on the one pump that works if Derby would approve, and if it is operable, turn on the one pump 60 days and then review at that point to see if there had been an appreciable impact made. And I think that would keep the, the cost down dramatically as well. And Commissioner Howell can verify that people were talking about finding ways to fund it themselves, if necessary, particularly long-term. But I told them I would come and make that motion to you guys today.
Very good. Commissioner Cruz?
So again, if we can call a special meeting in 18 hours, can we not call an en banc meeting with the people in Derby making this decision to have a discussion so that we can all get in the same room to discuss this? That is exactly what I feel like needs to be done. We can go back and forth every single day for the rest of our lives, but until we get in the same room and make a decision together, I don't see what the point is in us making motions, telling them what to do, sending it back to them, them sending it back to us. That, that really does nothing. So that is where I'm at with this whole situation.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Commissioner Cruz, I respect what you're saying. I understand it, and I, and I would be open for that, too. And if that's something that, that you feel we should do, I would absolutely support that as well. Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner?
Is this motion an open-ended checkbook for 60 days? We just pay whatever Derby sends us? Is there a cap?
We, we can absolutely do a cap, Commissioner Meitzner.
I'm not making the motion, I'm asking.
Right, right.
And if they turn it on and it blows up six hours after they turn it on, maintenance? We've, we have talked about this.
I know. I, I understand.
So what's the motion? The motion is we ask Derby to turn it on and send us a receipt?
Send us a bill. Similar to what we did in 2016, but if you would like a specific dollar amount.
Okay, let me.
I, I would, I would support that.
Commissioners, Mike Papun, interim county councilor. We were running into the same issue we ran into the last time we had the special meeting. I think part of Commissioner O'Donnell's motion needs to be resent, to rescind the previous action.
Oh, sure.
That the Board of, Board of County Commissioners took. And if this may be the time to address, if we're gonna do that, if this motion fails or passes, whatever, if it fails, to go back to look at rescinding the previous action, because right now, as Commissioner Howell is well aware, we have a current motion and, which has passed, this commission, to have Derby turn on both wells.
Right. Well, should I make a, a substitute motion right now to rescind that first?
I'd second that.
Motion. Okay. So that, that, so substitute motion, let's rescind the, the first vote, because it was for two pumps.
Okay. And I apologize, I didn't know this was coming up, or I'd have the exact dates and previous language we had from the motions. Previous motions that were adopted, but I think we can figure it out, probably.
Yes. Okay. So that is my substitute motion to my earlier motion that we rescind the items, and I think it was on that meeting on the night, roughly the 19th of June that we voted for that.
We have a motion and a second to rescind the motion that was during the regular session, not anything dealing with the special session.
Right.
Everybody understand that?
And that was the off-agenda item that you brought in that day?
Yes.
That was Commissioner Howell's off-agenda item.
I have a comment.
Okay, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as I said earlier, I have been saying for several weeks now that that previous motion is still alive, which is necessa, necessitates this action. I would feel better voting for this if this was coupled with a new plan. By itself, I don't support the motion, just to rescind the, the motion I made on the, on the off-agenda item in that, in that previous meeting, because I think that we need to have a plan. And so I would be glad to support this if it was coupled with a new plan. The meet, the special meeting we had on Tuesday, two weeks ago, I believe it was, my motion was to decap it at $15,000 and, and not tell Derby, but request Derby, ask them to put on, no, to turn on whatever pumps would work. One, at least one, if not two. Talking to some of the folks in Derby, it's not really clear exactly what the problem is with the one pump that doesn't work. And it was suggested that we would, I guess, ask them to ascertain the situation with the, with the inoperative pump, to find out what it would take to get it to be operational. But in the meantime, the, the motion I made on the special meeting a couple of weeks ago was to cap it at $15,000 and to request that Derby would consider turning on the one pump if, if they could, and the second pump if it was possible. So we're simply asking Derby, but it was capped at $15,000. And of course, that motion failed on a vote of two to three. I would be glad to support this motion if it was coupled with a new plan. But right now, as it sits, I can't do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
So after all of this last week, just for the record, I did ask, I think that there is a new plan, first of all. We have talked about digging out the ditches as soon as they're dry. We have talked about having a water summit to see what exactly is going to happen with all of the water in the community. So saying that there is no new plan is incorrect, because last week after this, I was on the phone, I was talking to experts. I am working on a new plan, and this isn't even my district. So to let, to say that is not happening is really inaccurate, because we are working for something. Because the one thing that we don't want to do is spend a bunch of money for something that's not gonna work. So we have to understand what the problems are in order to solve them. So we have been working. Tom, I set up, I had a meeting with manager, I had a meeting with Tanya about setting up a water summit and, and understanding how water flows around here as a region so that we maybe can solve this for the future. So that is something that is in the works. I don't know that we have a date for that yet, but we are, I have asked Susan Ehrlewein to ask other experts to come to help us understand what we can do, because we spent how much money for the, what was the other plan that we spent?
Study.
The study for the community that didn't want to do it. What, what was that community? Please help me.
Peach Valley.
Peach Valley. So we spent how much money?
It was $25,000 or $30,000 to PEC for the stud, long-term solution.
Right. And so we, as, as taxpayers, spent this money to help this community out, and then they decided not to do it. So what can we do, you know, to help this community in the long run? I think, I think that's what we are developing. I mean, as everybody knows, nothing happens fast in government, so we have to understand what the options are. So there, there is something in the works. I, I just feel like when emotions are high, things don't really happen as well as they should. And I feel for these people down south. I do. I just had an email from somebody this morning in Valley Center. So it's, it's all over. It's not just down south. It is all over our county. And unfortunately, we've just had a ton of rain, and our, our ground just can't handle it. So I think that we have to take that into consideration. But there is a plan in, in place.
So we have a motion to rescind the original motion from the regular meeting, and we have a second. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
All right. So now, I, that was a substitute motion. So are we then back on the original, or should I make that motion again, mister?
I think your original motion will suffice now, because the previous action just taken by the board to rescind the, the action at the official board meeting.
Okay.
Come in 19.
So, so what I would like to do is amend that original motion, though, is to turn
what the options are. So, there, there is something in the works. I, I just feel like when emotions are high, things don't really happen as well as they should, and I feel for these people down south, I do. I just had an email from somebody this morning in Valley Center. So, it's, it's all over. It's not just down south, it is all over our county, and unfortunately, we've just had a ton of rain, and our, our ground just can't handle it. So, I think that we have to take that into consideration, but there is a plan in, in place.
So, we have a motion to rescind the original motion from the regular meeting, and we have a second. Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner Meitzner? Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
All right. So, now, that was a substitute motion, so are we then back on the original, or should I make that motion again, mister?
I think your original motion will suffice now, because the previous action just taken by the board to rescind the, the action at the official board meeting.
Okay.
On the 19th.
So, so what I would like to do is amend that original motion, though, is to turn on the one pump, ask, request Derby to turn on the one pump that we know is operational for 60 days, review at the end of 60 days, for costs not to exceed $10,000 over those two months. We know, three years ago, they ran two pumps for four months, and it was between 15 and 20,000 dollars. Is that correct, Mr. Spears?
I think it was about 6,500 dollars per month on the electric, and Derby has said they will.
For two pumps?
For, but two pumps, 6,500 dollars per month, plus or minus, and that did not include any labor.
Right.
From Derby, and they are going to include labor if they're turned on again.
Right. So, we know it'll be more than that for, because of cost of electricity, because of labor costs, but, so my, my motion would be amended to be, clean it up, because I've talked too much, but turn on the one, ask Derby to turn on the one pump that is operational for two months, to be reviewed at the end of two months, and put a cap of spending no more than 10,000 dollars. That's my motion.
Thank you. And do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Howell?
Just a couple of comments. I appreciate the efforts by individual commissioners to solve this. This is, this is the time to talk about it, and I have no awareness of what other commissioners are doing, what phone calls are making, what plans they have. I'll just tell you that 66 people were at that Salem Township meeting last night, these are some, these are people who are really hurting, and they look to government for, for help, and I think we're the only ones that possibly could help them, and it may not be, it's probably too little, too late, but I would like to see us go forward with this. I don't think 10,000 dollars is going to be enough. I'll support the motion. I tried 15 last time, they didn't pass, but I, I think that, and by the way, last motion that I made a few, a couple of weeks ago was not, it wasn't tied to a number of days, it just said 15,000 until, until the money runs out, so it would be whatever number of days would be available for that to pump. But anyway, I think that 10,000 dollars is not enough money, but I do think it's a step in the right direction. And then, again, in terms of, there are two distinct conversations going, there are short-term solutions and, and long-term solutions. This is only a short-term solution, potentially. We have got to have the long-term solution discussion, and that's where I think the, the en banc would be very valuable, or the August 8th meeting, I think from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock PM at the Hayesville Middle School, that I believe is being planned. That'll be a very good opportunity for us to, to talk multi-jurisdictional.
No.
Pardon me?
We're having a meeting in Hayesville?
There's one, there's one being set up by Commissioner O'Donnell, and I'm sure you'll hear about it.
We have it.
Commissioner O'Donnell's is not August 8th, though, I believe, there's two meetings we're talking about, there's Commissioner Cruz's more global meeting to discuss multiple long-term solutions. Commissioner O'Donnell's meeting is more specifically toward.
Hancock Acres.
Yes, Hancock Acres, and the ability to do a taxing solution down there for just that area. Is that correct?
That's the meeting tomorrow, the, the big one on August 8th.
Okay, is that Hayesville Middle?
Yeah, yesterday.
There is two meetings happening, though, just to avoid confusion here.
Small meeting for Hancock is tomorrow, and it's more of a private meeting between a few, a few residents and Commissioner O'Donnell, and I think I'll, I plan to be there as well, but the big meeting is August 8th, and that's being planned.
Just to clarify, the August 8th meeting, Commissioner Cruz requested that be at Cargill, and we ran that by Commissioner O'Donnell, he wanted it in that district closer to that location, which is what we're trying to work through now.
Okay. It'd certainly be nice if, if the chairman had some idea that this stuff was going on. Makes it a little more confusing.
Mr. Chairman, I sent out an email to everybody describing all the different drainage projects we had, because I knew there was confusion going around, and hopefully you'll have that, and if you have any questions, just call us, but there are several different things going on.
Very good. We've got a couple more comments. Commissioner O'Donnell?
In regards to a couple of things that Commissioner Howell said, the reason why I was trying to put a timeframe on it and an amount on it was to try to meet in the middle based on concern expressed by commissioners at prior meetings, and that's why coming back in a couple of months to see what has happened, I thought would be valuable. So, I, I'm just trying to find some middle ground on this issue, and, and that's, that's why I put date and, and a dollar amount on that. So, but I respect, just to be clear, whatever my colleagues do, I respect their position, because I know it's uncomfortable for everybody, and I, and I even, I hate being put in that type of situation, but I know the residents down there hate what they're going through too, so I feel like I would be derelict in my duties if I didn't at least try to find a solution. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner?
A question, did we hire PEC or somebody, do we already do a hiring for this analysis?
For Hancock Acres?
Yeah.
No, not, not at this point, we haven't. We're going to have the meeting with the people tomorrow, from, people from Hancock Acres, and sort of follow the same process we did with Peach Valley, where we hired PEC, but that would be something that would come back before you.
Is Peach Valley the first problem? And we've hired PEC for the Peach Valley problem?
That was a decade ago.
And they gave a solution, a long-term solution, and Peach Valley elected not to have special assessments, they could not give 51%.
That was a few years ago.
A decade ago.
Yes.
Okay, so.
So, now, we're going to do the same process for Hancock Acres and see if they want to pursue that.
And who's going to pay for the study?
I would say the county would pay for the study like we did at Peach Valley. But then, if they want to do the, then you have a long-term solution.
Right, the solution.
Then if they want to do it, if 51% sign up to do it, then they will pay for it.
So, as of now, we're committed at least to clean out the ditches around everywhere, whenever it happens.
Well, let me tell you about that. The water is in the ditches because of groundwater. So, you can clean them out all you want, but the water is still going to be there. But when the groundwater goes down, yes, as Commissioner Cruz said, we will help Salem Township with setting the grade, and they will clean them out, their township ditches.
And we've, we are committed or not committed to pay PEC to do another analysis?
Well, that will come before you at a later date. We're going to meet with Hancock Acres tomorrow, the folks there, tell them what we plan to do, we would get a proposal from PEC, and then we would bring it before you, and you would vote it up or down.
Okay. I have a couple of comments, only because of what's happened recently. Some of you may have seen in the news that Florence, Kansas, yesterday, or the, or the day before, was flooded to the tune of three feet of water, because the Corps of Engineers, it let water out of Marion Reservoir. So, the Corps of Engineers, human people, decided to let water out of a reservoir, and it flooded Florence, Kansas. Reno County, just yesterday, their commissioners voted to spend 26,000 dollars to do an analysis, because Bueller Road from 85th Street to K-61 floods, and they can't even get the emergency people down there. So, that's going to be a study. And then, just this morning in the paper, based on a rainstorm that happened on July 4th, Durham, Kansas, only an hour away, that population of 106 was flooded, three feet of water, unexpected, thunderstorms, the water down, downtown Durham was three feet high, 32 inches of water, and they have started a GoFundMe campaign, hoping to raise 25,000 to solve some of their problem. So, what I'm saying is, just within about 45 minutes or an hour of where we are at, there's all kinds of stuff, as Commissioner Cruz alluded to earlier, but for some reason, mainly driven by earlier, one county commissioner, and, but now with Commissioner O'Donnell, I totally appreciate your efforts, Commissioner O'Donnell, to help solve a problem, but there's this assumption that if we say, go flick a switch, everything's going to be fine, and there's flooding going on all over, and other people besides the first 11 residents, and now these residents, are having problems statewide, and is, and are these going to come to us and say, hey, would you, you got some more switches that you can just flip? And this false hope that's out there, that it's going to be resolved, and it's happening, and I'm, and I, I am so sorry for it, but it's happening, and we are being government, thinking we're going to flip a switch and solve the problem. And there's three that just happened the last four days, 32 inches, three feet, 106 residents. So, I, I applaud the effort, but I think the reality is something that's, that's the reality. The reality is the reality, and that's even been alluded to. So, I'm going to have trouble supporting this myself, but we'll see. Any other comments, maybe?
Thank you. I'd like to say a couple of things. I've been waiting for everyone else to have an opportunity, but first of all, I've really got some concerns about us taking off agenda items of this magnitude, because we work things through our staff. You saw that everything that we passed today was staffed, every single item. We had staff that take, took a look at it, came to us with recommendations. Not one of us sitting on this board right now are geologists or experts in flooding whatsoever, so taking off agenda items is dangerous, because you can make bad decisions when you start knee-jerk reaction to, to different things. What we're dealing with today is, we've, we've heard in the past from some experts that came in during, during our staff meeting, and we talked about this, and there were experts, actually a geologist on the Derby Board, that says that this is not going to fix anything. And so, what we're dealing with are experts on one side, they're saying one thing, and we're dealing with emotions on the other side, and we're trying to resolve those two things, which is difficult to do, especially on an off agenda item, where that we haven't had staff involved in it. I truly believe that if we turn these on for 30, 60, 90 days, it's a placebo, it also sets a precedence that we're, they're going to be looking at us year after year. The solution is a long-term solution, it's not a knee-jerk placebo, let's turn on a switch and solve a problem. We do need to take a look at this long-term. I think that we do need a study, and I don't have a problem with funding a study from Sedgwick County. No matter what, if we turn on the switch today, all of Sedgwick County is paying for that. If we can do a study, and I know all of Sedgwick County will pay for the study, but if we can do a study, and they want to put together a special improvement district, then the people that benefit from it are the ones that are going to incur the cost, not all of Sedgwick County. And I think if we do a study, it needs to even have people like the Wichita Area Builders' Association involved in it, because part of the solution may not be any kind of pumping water out of the ground or taking care of the groundwater, it may be trying to figure out what we can do to these homes, to waterproof the homes, or to eliminate the basements, if that's what is needed. But we, we need the experts in that field to take a look at what has to happen to these houses, so that people can live in them. If we do decide to go down the road of, of asking Kansas Department of Water Resources to be able to start dumping water out of the ground into the Arkansas River, it's going to take a while to get that, to that point, but if we do something there, and I'm, I'm not saying that I'm going to vote for the current motion, but if we do decide to start pumping water, I think that we need empirical data on that, not emotions. So, I don't know what kind of study we need at that point, or who we can get to do a study, but we need measurements, a block from that well, two blocks from that well, three blocks from that well, four blocks, five blocks from that well, that tell us what the impact is, so we actually know if it's doing any good, or if it's just because the sun started shining and it quit raining. I grew up in Great Bend, and we had very high water table in Great Bend. As a matter of fact, I don't know how many of you know what a sandpoint is, but a sandpoint is, is a three or four foot long piece of pipe, you screw onto an end of a two-inch piece of pipe, and it's got a screen in it, and you drive it into the ground. We drove it into the ground with like a post hole digger, because it's sand out in that area, and you hit water very quickly, and we could have a very quick well, but it can also be some kind of a measuring tool. So, I don't know if a solution to try and, and get this empirical data is to get someone to, to get permission from all these homeowners out there to put something like a sandpoint down, so that we can measure the impact of turning on a well if we decide to do that in the future. But right now, for us to vote to turn on a well without us meeting with an en banc or trying to find out if, I don't know if we need an en banc, or if we just need to say that we're going to contract out a study to tell what's going to happen if we turn this on, and a second part of that study is to take a look at what actions the homeowners can take to alleviate the problem with flooding. So, I know that I've talked about a lot of different things, but I want a long-term solution, that's the bottom line, and I want it based on empirical data, not emotions. So, I'm not going to support the current motion, because I, it doesn't do any of the things that I just mentioned. It's not a long-term solution, it doesn't provide me any empirical data that I can make a decision on in the future. If we, I, I would approve, I would vote for a study that tries to look at the long-term solution, but I'm not going to, to support turning on a pump for, to make people feel good. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just things I've said over the last month, I'll just want to, I guess, remind anybody who would be listening, some of the details here, but I was elected to this board in 20, started this, started my commission here in 2015. In 2016, we had incredible amount of rain, and without much discussion, Commissioner Tim Norton came to a staff meeting, there was a minor discussion, there was consensus, and, and we turned on the pumps in 2016 for, for, I think, right at four months, it was about 21,000 dollars, I think, in, in total cost to do that. We asked Derby to turn on these pumps, there was, I don't think there was, I didn't, I wasn't aware of any, any debate or, or opposition to helping, since, since the county had committed to paying for that, and I don't think we had set a cap on what we would spend, we simply said we would like to turn those on, but along with that was an effort to understand the issue a little bit deeper, and we did do a study, which came back to us later that year, and the problem I see is we did not communicate to those impacted the results of that study. And so, I think, again, things dried up, I would tell you, when the pumps were turned on, they saw immediate significant relief, and it is believed by many people around there, this was a significant help to them. I, I don't think it's right for them to come, come back to the county repeatedly and ask us to do this over and over, and we do need a long-term solution, I agree with that, but to the extent we, we did this once before, they saw relief, and then we didn't communicate, kind of puts us in the position today for us to reconsider, I guess, doing this this last time, I said this last, I said this three, several meetings ago, this ought to be the last time, but we need to communicate to these folks, we need to find a long-term solution, and look to, look to the community, numbers of ways to help solve this thing going forward, whether that be fill, filling in basements, or waterproofing their basements, or, or French drain systems, pumping systems outside their home. I think the most elegant solution, which would be very awesome, would be to begin to use a 700 million gallons per month water, water as a resource for a municipality. Now, that's not going to be enough to supply the water needs of Derby, but that might go a long ways to supplying those needs, and I know it's extremely difficult, because it would require a water, a drinking water treatment facility, which would be, would be very expensive, but when the wells turned off, it essentially had an impact on the water table. If I, I've seen some, some studies, it says that the water table went up by 15 feet. I talked to some of the homeowners last night at the Salem Township meeting, they said there was 11 homes in one cul-de-sac, all of them never had water in the basement until 2016, and now they have had water in the basement numerous times. I don't, or it should say after 2007, I'm not sure exactly what the dates are, but, but they never had problems until, problems until those wells were turned off, and all of those 11 homes are having problems. These are not the same, same 11, not the same 11 homes we talked about in the, in the radius around the pumps, but just the point is, the, the region, the region that's struggling with this is not just 11 homes, it's not just three homes, it's hundreds of homes, and easily could be 1,000 or more people. And the reason this is unique is because Sedgwick County allowed basements to be built, there probably wasn't much communication regarding the historic nature of this water table. Derby used their home rule authority, made the best decision for their community to go towards Wichita Water, and the water authority, the state water authority limits how much water can be drawn from the ground. These are all different governing, governing bodies that made decisions that worked together to create essentially, homeowners that turned out to be victims, because state government and local government made decisions to, that allowed this to happen. What makes these folks unique is there are 11 water wells that used to be turned on, and now they're not, and I, I, I'm sympathetic towards them, I would love to see us do whatever we can reasonably to help them on the short term, and then have that long-term discussion, communicate with them, let them know that this is, this is really not the, the, the way we would solve this going forward. The best, again, the best solution, I think everybody would recognize, would recognize would be that using the 700 million gallons per month would solve this problem in, in the most amazing way, but that's also very expensive for, for, possibly for Derby or Wichita, or Sedgwick County, whoever would be involved in helping that to happen. I remind myself that it wasn't too long ago, we had a one cent sales tax proposal, and part of that, for, there was four projects built into that sales tax, one of those was a water quantity revenue, to increase the water quantity, and it was a fairly expensive proposal. I think a, a treatment facility down south might be less expensive, it would, would help, would help with the water quantity in a more economical way. So, these are, these are great discussions, probably for August the 8th. In the meantime, these folks downtown, down south are desperate for help, and that's the right word, they are truly desperate, and whether this is placebo or not, I'll tell you this, I know, I know there's experts out there, PEC does a great job, I love PEC, and I know they stand by the science and, and their, and their analysis, and I, and I support them and what they've said, but I also tell you, I'm hearing from hundreds of people down south who anecdotally say they saw immediate and significant help when they turned the pumps on last time, and to them, for us to turn our back and not help them this time, in the short term, moving towards a long-term discussion, they don't understand that. I, I can't say that there's hundreds of people down there that are lying, that's very offensive. They're simply constituents of ours, of Sedgwick County, that are desperate for someone to do something, and they are essentially victims. And all I'm saying is, let's, let's do what we can, 10,000 dollars is not, is not something we can't afford here in Sedgwick County, we can help the people with Sedgwick, Sedgwick County is great at helping people who are hurting, I love that about Sedgwick County, and all we're asking us to do is, let's do what we can for 10,000 dollars to help these folks this time, and move on to the long-term discussion. Again, we're not. discussion. And again, we're not telling anybody to do anything. We're simply asking. Mr. Chairman, thank you for the chance to speak, and again, I support the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner?
A quick question to Commissioner O'Donnell. You, you mentioned that the citizens down there said that they want to help pay for it?
They, they were talking about that last night.
Did they, were they committed to that? The other question?
There was a lot of emotion. In fact, Commissioner Howell said, well, we could discuss putting a GoFundMe together.
Right. That was my next question.
And I said, well, let me come and talk to everybody first today. And, and that's why, and the chairman said it best, these off-gen items are bad, because
Totally. I agree with it.
It doesn't give anybody time to research it. But like the text I know I sent the chairman last night, after the meeting around eight o'clock, it doesn't give anybody enough time. So, so I, I don't know how serious they were. Commissioner Meitzner, I, I assume that they are, and depending on how this goes today, we, I can continue to have those discussions.
It's half-baked, in a way. I mean, if, if they came and said, hey, we have, we're gonna do a fifteen-thousand-dollar GoFundMe account, if you guys would match fifteen, then we know that there's people involved. For instance, these other three places I just talked about are all trying to solve their own problem. They're not going to the city and the county to flip a switch.
Right.
So they haven't come to us with the saying, hey, we'd like to help pay for it. We'll obligate this, if you'll match that.
Yeah. And, and I don't know mechanisms that either Derby or the county could accept money from a GoFundMe for something like that. It, it's a unique problem, but it's something that, depending on how this goes today, I'll discuss with those residents.
Good.
So.
Thank you.
Okay. And as Commissioner Howell mentioned, they did turn on the pump back in twenty sixteen, but the problem is, that was a temporary something, placebo, I believe, that everybody thinks that it costs them something to happen, but we have no empirical evidence that it did happen. And that's what I'm asking for. That's what we need the staff to take a look at. That we need the staff to come back with a recommendation for the future, for a long-term solution, not a knee-jerk reaction. So I'm gonna vote against this motion. I would vote if either Commissioner Howell or Commissioner O'Donnell wanted to make a motion later on that, that we take a look at a long-term solution, and we task the staff to do what our staff is supposed to do.
And, and that's something that, after our meeting on Thursday, I don't wanna make that motion until we meet with those residents.
Okay, that's fine. Very good. So I don't see any other discussion?
If I could interject just for a moment, Mike Papoon, interim county councillor. Could, could I suggest an amendment to Commissioner O'Donnell's motion to, that we direct the legal, or county councillor's office to draft a, we can do a quick contract for signature by the county manager to cap the county, county's liability at ten thousand dollars.
I, I consider that a friendly amendment, and would request that.
We can get that done very quickly.
My motion includes the contract, and I would hope the second would, would agree to that as well.
Okay.
I agree.
Very good. Does everyone understand the motion that's on the table right now? Okay? Madam Kirk, call a motion.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
No.
Chairman Dennis?
No.
Okay. Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Mr. Papoon, you have anything? I know we had a staff meeting on legislative issues the other day. Do you have anything new?
No, I don't, sir.
Very good. Next item, please.
Other?
Do any commissioners have anything during other today? Commissioner Meitzner? Yes, Mr. Chairman. On a brighter note, I think it's worth noting, based on the tremendous regional input that's been happening yesterday in the, in the news, as well as in the Business Journal, the National Institute for Aviation Research, NIAR, NIR, another big defense contract from a thirty-three-million-dollar deal from the Army. And this is, goes on top of the twenty-three-million-dollar deal to, out of WSU with the Air Force. Senator Moran was incredibly helpful in this. He's been very helpful in other items here locally, and in our state. And this takes our, Senator Moran, and, and to another extent, Congressman Estes, have been bringing in members of, of the armed forces, members of the federal delegations and around the country, in to visit NCAT and NAR. And we are now seeing the fruits of that. And this is, this truly puts Wichita State on, in this research game for federal dollars with the military. And I just wanna compliment, obviously, Dr. John Tomlin, and, and for sure, Senator Moran, for, for helping land that. If I can just read the last couple of sentences from Tompkins, he said, "The expertise of our aerospace facility and staff is crucial in advancing the efforts of the Department of Defense, and in providing the ultimate applied learning experience for Wichita State graduate and undergraduate students, giving them an advantage no other university in the country can match." So my thanks to, congratulations to Wichita State, John Tomlin, and my great thanks to Senator Jerry Moran.
Thank you. I have just a couple of things. I wanna recognize that just recently, we got to go out, and we were instrumental, Sedgwick County, into renaming the Big Ditch, MS Mitchell Floodway. And we wanna thank, again, Congressman Estes for ushering that through the House, and we wanna thank Senator Moran for escorting it through, through the Senate. And they were both here to help us during the dedication ceremony. So I think that is an excellent recognition of a very deserving citizen in our community. The other thing I wanna mention is that Kate already started the meeting out with it, but we have the fair tonight. We've got a parade, and then the fair, at the end of the parade, we're also going to have a ribbon-cutting for a new building that they're going to build out at the fairground. So I hope that everyone comes out to the fair, and it extends through the weekend. Final thing that I'd like to talk about, and if Commissioner Howell would hold his card up, too, the cards are a reality, okay? Commissioner Howell and I have received our veterans' discount cards, and we wanna thank, once again, Tanya Buckingham for her support of our veterans throughout Sedgwick County. These cards, and once you get it, and you'll get it by filing your DD-214. And the real reason behind the cards are so that your, the veterans themselves and their next-of-kin are protected if they ever lose their DD-214. So we truly want our veterans to go ahead and file that DD-214. But when you, once you file it, and you get this little discount card, they also give you about a three or four-page document that shows all of the different businesses here in this area that provide discounts, and what kind of discounts that they provide to the veterans. So once again, they are available. Commissioner Howell and I got ours right off the bat on, actually, I snuck in on Friday.
He cheated. He was number one. I wanted to be number one, but he beat me to it on Friday.
So I did sneak in, and mine is number one. But it's available to all veterans. I just wanted to let them know. And I wanna once more thank Tanya Buckingham. I don't see any other items under other. Does any other commissioners have anything? We have no, no executive session today. Anything else need to go, come before the board today?
See nothing?